Handwritten part didn't match. Yeah, well, they, you know, they cashed for the, uh, they only cashed for the handwritten part, not the digits. And, uh, so that you can change those numbers. See, I understand that, but that doesn't always happen. It, it seems like it's always my problem. It's I always get the.
Oh, we haven't.
Yes, sorry.
All right, let's, uh, stand and see the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where riches stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you gotta tell somebody to bring your stick.
I didn't break mine. All right, we will, uh, call the meeting. Board of Education regular meeting Wednesday, November nineteenth to order at six thirty. Roll call please, Lee.
Bulmer.
Weir.
Lower. Munson. Nelson.
Here.
Smack.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Yates.
Here. All right. We have a quorum. Item number two, public comments. Do you have anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, he did.
All right, um, one second. Uh, I'm gonna read the, uh, participation of the Board of Education meetings. The Board of Education welcomes public comments during the public comment portion of the agenda. Those who wish to address the board should state their name, limit their statement to five minutes. Comments are not restricted to items on the agenda. However, comments regarding specific student discipline cases are not allowed during open session. Generally, generally, these type of comments should come to the board only after they've been referred to the teacher, principal, or administrator who is closest to the situation. If all other avenues for resolving these items have been exhausted and the issue has not been resolved, you may request to address the board usually during closed session. In addition, please refrain from using derogatory comments about staff members or students at this time. All right, so. Alicia. Hold on just one second, start the timer. Okay.
Good evening. You all should know me by now, but in case you've forgotten, my name is Alicia Stewen, and I'm a parent of four children here in Mercer County School District. This is my third time standing here at this podium, and I'm going to be blunt. I hope some of you feel a knot in your stomach when you see me walk through that door, because you know I'm the one in this community who has the guts to say out loud what everyone else is thinking. The sign out front is supposed to represent education, safety, professionalism, and integrity. But right now, the name above that door brings some kind of mistrust, criminal behavior, and cult-like drama. And if you've played any part in creating that, I'm here for you tonight. We are past misunderstandings, excuses, and, quote, waiting for more information. We now have criminal charges, student data access for years, and emails mocking and belittling the school nurse. We also now have public social media behavior that is absolutely unacceptable for anyone connected to the district leadership. Let me be clear. I am not here to call out every single member. Some of you have acted professionally, some of you have shown restraint, some of you are doing the job the way the community expects. And I'm grateful for those of you who have engaged in difficult conversations. But to the board members whose emails are now public, and to the board members whose spouses are publicly laughing, mocking, and making Epstein jokes while parents are trying to discover if and why their children's private information was accessed, you are the problem. You violated the code of conduct. Your behavior or the behavior happening in your household reflects directly on your ability to lead. The evidence speaks for itself. Your juvenile tendencies helped create the very environment that allowed this district to stray so far from center. And since some people seem to think this situation is funny, I brought copies. These are the comments calling it a distraction. These are the Epstein jokes. These are the laughing reactions at a criminal investigation involving student data. These are the public reactions of a school board member and another board member's spouse. You don't have to take my word for it, there's proof. If you think this community is going to tolerate that kind of behavior from people tied to elected leadership, you are sorely mistaken. It is humiliating, humiliating, it is embarrassing, and it is a blatant violation of the Illinois School Board Code of Conduct, which requires dignity, professionalism, respect for staff, and behavior that reflects positively on this district. And since you clearly aren't hearing it from each other, let me tell you what your own staff is saying. Multiple staff members have told me personally that the morale is the lowest it has ever been in this district. Not low, not struggling, the lowest it has ever been. Your teachers are defeated, your support staff is exhausted, your nurses are disrespected, and your community is angry. Breathe a room, walk the halls, understand that morale has hit bottom. And please, for the sake of every single student in this district, do something to fix the problems we are facing. Leadership is missing completely. This district is falling apart, not because of parents, not because of social media, not because of drama, but because of the leadership failures that happened inside this room. This brings me what needs to be said clearly and out loud. I am calling for resignations, not from the entire board, not from the board, from the members who have done their jobs and upheld their responsibilities, only from those whose actions, behavior, emails, or household conduct has damaged this district. If you violated the code of conduct, resign. If your conduct has damaged the community trust, resign. If your behavior has embarrassed this district, resign. You do not get to embarrass an entire school district and then pretend everything is fine. You do not get to sit comfortably in leadership while staff are telling you morale is in the basement. You do not get to say when your actions or your silence are the reason why parents are demanding better. Omission of expected or required action is the definition of failure. So congratulations, you have failed. Mercer County deserves better, our staff deserves better, and above all, our students deserve far better.
Thank you. Uh, item three, board comments.
Mr. Brown, we have this in the grade.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Devin, my apologies. We have the new Boston Elementary School joining us today.
Here we are.
Um, I'm Ms. Fuquey. I teach fifth grade at New Boston Elementary School. I know last month you guys had to see a video of our enrichment group doing announcements, and they're very proud of it, so I brought them here to tell you a little bit more about it. You're more than welcome to come watch them create these videos and even. But let us take it away.
Can you introduce yourselves first?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
My name is Cooper Nysney, and I'm in fifth grade at New Boston Elementary. I help create our school's morning announcements.
Hello, I'm Casey Percher, and I'm in fifth grade at New Boston Elementary. I work on filming, filming, and editing.
Our student announcements are short videos that we make each morning to share important information with our school.
They include things like the lunch menu, weather, upcoming events, and the J V D.
We film in front of recording screens and add digital backgrounds.
We create backgrounds that match the theme, like weather and lunch, which is a school-wide background.
We learned how to use the iPad to record microphones so speakers could be heard and cue cards so the videos got professional.
We use editing software to combine the different video segments into one final announcement.
We learned how to fix mistakes, cut clips, and add effects.
We are improving our public speaking because we record ourselves talking again.
We keep practice teamwork since we have to plan scripts, rehearse, and help each other during filming.
We are learning responsibility because we need to finish the announcements in time for the meeting. With all the teachers before the design of the meeting.
Students pay more attention to announcements from their phone and visual.
Our videos help everyone feel connected and informed.
It gives us a chance to use real-world technology that we might use in teacher jobs.
We hope to be more creative in the different segments we include in the future.
We're proud that we can make something the whole school sees every day.
It feels good to know we're helping Arkanschool community.
If you would like to come and watch us record sometime, reach Ms. Fuquey, and she will get something set up.
Thank you for my name is Conton, and I hope to get some questions.
What, do you have an example of your joke of the day?
Um.
Remember one?
I remember one, yeah.
Well, I'd love to hear it.
I made this up, but I remembered it. What did Arkans, no, 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 no. What did Tennessee? Safely Arkansas.
Should've said, I don't know, Alaska.
That's good.
Thank you, Van White.
Drink up, guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming. So, any board comments? All right, item number four, correspondence, do we have any? No? Okay. Item number five, approval of consent agenda. Anyone have any questions concerning items in the consent agenda? Any requests to pull anything from the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Frick. Yates, second. Frick, motion, Yates, second. Um, roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smack.
Yes.
Frick.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Bulmer.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Onto committee reports. Finance committee. Why, why did I not find the, uh, committee report?
Might be in the respower, I printed one off if you wanna kinda check.
Yeah, so, um, we went over the budget, we went over levy, um, so the revenue report showing two point, uh, twenty-one point eight million in revenue, um, so far fourteen point six million of that has come in. Expenses, our expense budget's twenty-five point two million. We've got a little bit of a deficit there that we're working through. Um, eight point two million has been sent, uh, spent, we're about thirty-five percent of the budget, we're thirty-three percent through the fiscal year. Um, the reason of the, a lot of the expenses at the beginning of the year, we won't see again the rest of the year, so that may be why we're a little ahead of it, um, than we should be. And then health insurance, uh, we deposited one hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars into our health insurance account, but we had two hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars worth of claims, uh, last month. So, our reserves at the end are three hundred ninety-three thousand. Any questions about the finance report? If, uh, then we move on to building grounds, do we have a building grounds? Yes, we did. There's a little note. Little notes, all right. So they, uh, looked through the high school project, um, where that stands, and also, uh, we have the architect working through a ten-year health, life, safety study to determine how much we would need to spend to, uh, fix those problems and how that stacks up to, uh, uh, doing a new addition. Uh, the school maintenance grant, uh, New Boston, uh.
Two thousand, uh, ref, refunding Boston.
Oh, okay, refund, New Boston was put in two thousand, so it probably is in need of repair. Um, we'll talk about the courtyards of Apollo, kindergarten rooms, um, then electrical charging stations, and also discuss the, the changes of the wrestling building. Any questions about the building grounds committee meeting minutes? Um, if not, moving on to item seven, seven point one, FOIA request. There were three FOIA requests in our packet, anybody have any questions about those?
There was one added after.
Oh, there's a fourth.
Are those FOIA requests public knowledge?
Yeah.
Who sent them?
Yeah.
Like, who's requesting that information?
Yep.
Is that public knowledge?
Yep, that's, uh, they end up being part of the record of this board meeting. So, um, we had three, one by an attorney, one by, um, where the.
WQAD.
WQAD was one, the attorney issued the charges. Or yeah, that's what it was.
So who was the new one?
Yeah, 'cause I only see three in here.
It was about purchase orders, we've gotten those before.
Oh.
It was a quick.
Okay.
I see.
Every couple of months.
Okay. Any questions about the FOIA request? Seven point two, board agreements. So we had our, uh, training with the I S B, uh, representative, and we came up with some changes to our current board protocols. Um, most of them were kind of wording cleanups. Staff addressing the board, we wanted to add in that concerns may only occur following the completion of the chain of command, so basically making sure that folks follow the chain of command when they're bringing, uh, issues to the board. Um, and then placing item on the monthly agenda, we put a timetable to it, but knowing full well that sometimes, you know, it might be nine days before the, the next meeting, so, uh, but we are stating we should be ten days prior to the, to the board meeting. And then board members asking questions about agenda items, so if there's something in the agenda that you want more information about or whatnot, um, we just require that they go to the superintendent the Monday before the board meeting, that way he has time to research it and get the answer to have at the board meeting. And then they would also, uh, superintendent typically, if one person has a question about, say, something on the bill list, uh, they'll usually respond to all of us with the answer, that way if somebody else had that same answer, they could, you know, they get, or the same question, they get the same answer. And then, uh, can we, let's see, responding to complaints, when the board receives a, um, an email to the board as a whole, um, we discussed designating the vice president to be the one to respond. I'm reading, you drew the short straw. So on board protocols, if somebody sends a whole, an email to all the board members, it's the vice president's duty to respond with, uh.
The most emailed, you see, most.
Yeah.
Within twenty minutes.
Yeah. We'll see about that. Remote participation in board meetings. Per the Open Meetings Act, members may participate remotely under the following circumstances. Personal illness or disability, employment purpose or business of the public body, um, or a family member emergency or unexpected childcare obligation. So, um, they can participate remotely by calling in if, uh, one of those four reasons, from one of those four reasons. Conflict of interest, we just talked about that the board, boards should be cognizant of business items that present a conflict of interest. In those instances, the board members shall abstain from voting on those issues if needed. Uh, general reminders can be given, so all of us, you know, it's probably hard not to have a conflict of interest from time to time. And if, uh, you know, sometimes we vote on something that might be a bigger picture item, but it might affect a family member, so, uh, if another board member thinks about it and gives a general reminder to the board member that might be, um, voting in a conflict, uh, that would be nice if the board members gave each other a heads eye, so that we don't break any of this. Those are the changes that we, um, wanted to discuss. If no one has any questions or issues with those, we'll vote on them next month as an action item.
I did actually have a question, Bill. I was at that training, and I read that right before I came here, but not on my laptop. There's C under one of them.
Is it yellow?
It, it, it's in reference to being able to speak to the board in closed session.
Okay.
And, um, my concern was is that, uh, um, the staff, say admin staff, are, the only layer they have from the superintendent is the board. So if they have, like, they can't go to their, their teachers and, with a complaint, so their, their only avenue, if they have a issue with the superintendent, is to address the board. And somewhere on there, I thought it said that the board didn't have to listen to them.
Two C says the board has the right to reject this staff request to speak in closed session.
So the board would vote on that, or they'd talk about that?
Yeah, it would be, yeah. I've never witnessed that happen.
You've never ever seen an admin has to talk to the board, they didn't, wasn't allowed to do it?
Admin?
Admin.
Talking about admin, I don't know, it's staff.
So red, staff, it's not admin. Admin is not staff. Yeah, it, it's just weirdness in the board.
Yeah, we can change it.
It's just weirdness in the board.
This is a living document, so it's not.
Right, and that's why I would prefer it be correctly formed.
Which, which number were you on?
Um.
Two C.
Two.
For the top.
Do you have a, do you have some verbiage that you, 'cause we can, 'cause we're not voting on tonight.
Right.
So if you wanna email Alan with maybe some wording that he would like to see it added to, and then we can, we can just adopt it. He'll, he'll send it out to the board members.
Perfect.
And if anybody has a problem, they can.
Yeah, because, because, you know, to put a block between, um, admin and the board is, I mean, I feel like they could have access to the board.
Agreed. Any other questions? All right, seven point three, I S B E school report card.
Okay, the report card just came out, and it came out for the district as a whole and also for each building. They've been doing that now for twenty-plus years, I would imagine, and, uh, it gives a lot of helpful information. I thought I'd just do some, uh, you know, some typical information that you might find interesting, a little district snapshot. Uh, we have one thousand two hundred fifty-one students. We spend fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars per student each year. Uh, our low income percentage is forty-nine percent. Uh, twenty-eight percent chronic absenteeism, uh, in the district, the state average is twenty-five percent, so we're just a little bit above that. We have an eighty-eight percent graduation rate, the state average is eighty-nine. Uh, we have a six percent student mobility rate. What that means is the percentage of students that move in and move out, uh, ours is, six percent of our student population either moves in or out each year. The state average is seven percent. And then they gave us, uh, summative designations, they started doing that about six or seven years ago. And so they have, uh, one, two, three, four, they have five categories. The exemplary schools are the top performing ten percent of schools, then the commendable schools are under that. They're, uh, below the top ten percent, but they don't have any groups that are low performing, you know, subgroups like disabled students, uh, you know, the di, the different races and the, um, boys and girls and low income, et cetera. Uh, and then if you're a targeted school, you're above the lowest performing, uh, however, you have, uh, one group, at least one group who is, uh, performing below the lowest five percent. So, we had one school get targeted as the junior high and as for the students with I E Ps. They did not score high enough on the, the state tests. Um, they, uh, and so therefore, the state, uh, labels you as, as targeted, and now they'll, for the next four years, they'll work through a plan. Then they have comprehensive schools, they're the lowest performing, uh, and, um, and then the intensive schools are the lowest performing after four years, they still have to come up, and so then they would be the intensive schools. And, uh, so we had, uh, three commendable and one targeted school, and, um, and so that's basically the highlights of the school report card. I don't know if you had any questions.
And that's online available?
Yes, yes, I would just type in your Google search, uh, Illinois School Report Card, and it'll take you to site, and basically just type in your school district's name or the school's name, and it'll just pop right up. And it's very, uh, easy to read and easy to understand, so I encourage you to do it if you're curious about it.
Any questions about the school report card review? All right, on to the F Y twenty-five audit.
Okay, uh, the F Y twenty-five audit is done, however, they haven't given us the paperwork yet. And so we were hoping to get it before the board meeting, and we didn't, so we'll just, uh, put it on there for the December.
And the, uh, seven point five, uh, F Y twenty-six school levy, or the county levy?
Yes, levy discussion, in November you talk about it, in December you vote on it. And so, um, our finance committee the other night bandied about a few ideas. Uh, this year, our E A V for all three counties, I don't know if hopefully most people know that, the vast majority of our school districts is in Mercer County, a little sliver at the top is in Rock Island County, and a little bit bigger of a slip, uh, is on the bottom end of the county in Henderson County. So, but, uh, so Mercer County's E A V is going up eight point nine percent, Rock Island's is going up twenty percent, and, uh, Henderson County is going up six percent. So you put it all together, and you have, uh, nine point oh-two-six-two percent increase with all three counties together. Uh, it's going up two hundred, and, uh, our, our whole E A V will be two hundred seventy-six million, uh, eight thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars. That's an increase of twenty-two million. So, uh, if you would apply the, the current, this year's tax rate to that, you would get thirteen million one hundred seventy thousand. If you would apply last year's tax rate, you would get thirteen million three hundred thirty-eight thousand. Our tax rate went down six percentage, or six percentage points this last year. Uh, well, not six percentage points, it went out six cents. And, and the reason for that is, after we established what our levy was going to be at the December meeting, the E A V went up after that, because the E A V is just an estimate for Mercer County, and when the final numbers came in, they were higher. And because of that, then our tax rate went down, and it's what's, uh, commonly known as leaving money on the table. We lost out on a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So, uh, as I worked the numbers this year, um, and, and talked to the finance committee, uh, I think that historically, I should also add, we've been at the four point eight-three, uh, tax rate level. And I was talking to Scott, uh, Peter, he came in today, and I talked to him for about an hour on finance stuff, and, uh, he said that historically, while he was here, they tried to keep the tax rate four point eight-four, just tried to keep it steady at, eh, right on four point eight-four. And so this year, last year, went down to four point seven-seven, so, um, I ran the numbers for the, with the previous year, it was just four point eight-three. And, uh, if this E A V goes up again after we submit it in December, we're gonna be in the same boat, leaving money on the table. So, one of the ideas I had is I ran a scenario, so if, if it's thirteen million three hundred thirty-eight thousand, they expect it to come in at the four point eight-three, I kinda wonder if we should just do a twelve percent, which is thirteen million five hundred twenty-five, so it's basically, um, you know, a, a little less than two hundred thousand more. And that way, if it doesn't go up, if that E A V stays the same, then we won't get that two hundred thousand, but at least we will have been prepared to get the two hundred thousand. And if the E A V does go up, then we'll still be able to capture, uh, that amount of money that we lost last year. So that's something for you to think about, is do we wanna ask for a little more than we think we'll get, just in case it goes back up? Or do you wanna go back to this year's four point seven-seven, or the year before's four point eight-four? Uh, it'd be my recommendation right now that we would, uh, go for the, the two hundred thousand more so that we're sure to capture our maximum tax rate. And, you know, I should just add, for the, the three funds, the education fund, the bond, and not the bond interest, the operations and maintenance fund, and the transportation fund, back in two thousand nine, the voters, when they voted on the consolidation, it was, do you, uh, approve a. "Do you approve a consolidation between Alito and Westmer at the following tax rate?" And the, the tax rates were two dollars and seventy cents for the ed fund, seventy cents for the IMRF fund, and twenty cents for the transportation. And I know in Alito, it was a seventy percent yes vote, and in Westmer, it was, I think, somewhere in the sixties. And so the voters already approved that tax rate, so you don't want to ask for less because, you know, the financial challenges of today. I think you want to keep it where it is. So I, that's what I would recommend now. You don't have to say tonight what you want, other than maybe just casual conversation. But I'll run you scenarios at all three of those between now and December, and you'll be able to make a decision about what you want to do.
The only year I remember us doing this was when Ron and froze taxes. Remember, the governor froze taxes and we asked for more, Jessica, we never got more.
Yeah.
Because whatever, however, we froze it.
Right, right.
I can't remember what the, what that was about.
Yeah, I don't remember.
We didn't get it because, yeah, it was kind of just.
Anyway, then that's okay, but at least we know we got the most that we could get, you know, so. So, any other comments?
Pretty exclusive, extensively.
Okay. All right, on to seven point six SRO for Apollo, right?
Yes. Sheriff Dusty Terrell called me a few weeks ago and said that he might have a name of someone who could be an SRO for us. He wanted to know if I wanted him to proceed. And so I said, "Well, let me, let me run it by the board." And so if that's why it's on the agenda tonight. We, you know, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us and we're going to be, you know, doing a lot of decision-making and maybe some reworking of things in the coming months. So I guess my recommendation is that we hold off hiring an SRO, not because they're not important and not because safety isn't important. But I just think we should hold off at this time as we work through these various topics in the coming, coming months. And then perhaps if this person is still available or something can be worked out and we decide to move that direction, then we can at that, at that time. But I think things are still uncertain right now, and so it would be my recommendation that we hold off. But I just, not that you have to vote on it tonight, but I just hope and get consensus or if you think my idea is okay or whether you think that's important to go ahead and pursue that.
And we lost CJ, right?
Yeah, we have Officer Brendel, goes between the junior high and the high school. Officer Ford is at the high school. And then down at New Boston, we have Officer Evans. And I don't think anybody's assigned, Chad, you can help me out, anybody's not assigned right now.
I use Officer Ford.
Oh, Officer Ford, okay, from the high.
Holler over.
Yeah, all right.
Would it be easier for Mr. Brendel to do it here?
Mr. Brendel, that's where Brendel was actually pulled last year.
So he's not been here recently? Last year was his last year?
So you don't have one?
The, the topic was him being here at some point, but they were understaffed at the sheriff's department, so they came to grow. So he's like, when he's slow and stuff, he'll stop in to check in, but he has not been stationed at the sheriff's.
All right, thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
So.
Officer Ford, how do you guys see it, right?
We've called Officer Ford.
So she's, she's bouncing between all three.
Fun is that.
You would come out of tour?
We might want to investigate one, at least one more, so that they can, because one person's pretty much handled this, these two campuses, can they? I mean, it's not too far away if there's a... But I, I don't like, I don't like the high school all the time. If it's coming out of tour, I'd be confident. We're not taking action, we're going out in direction.
Yeah, because maybe the guy's not available now or something, but.
I thought we had, yeah, I thought we had.
Oh, you thought he was going?
I think he told me he would, he wanted to be out there more because he's not the sheriff.
Okay.
What do you think, Tom? I'm not in favor of suspending maybe.
I mean, I guess, too, I get, I, I, I.
That's a, here, we're going by, we were.
Another one nice thing, this does come out of tour, which is flush, which we all have to still pay for. It just doesn't have to be like, like whatever line. So just because you can take it, don't make it, you should. That's a lot, that's my.
I appreciate that. So that's right or not, that's fine.
Time to agree with that, I'm very optimistic.
Perfect. All right, I think you got the correction. Okay. All right. Perfect. Moving on, eight action items, eight point one, school maintenance grant.
Okay, the school maintenance grant has been made available. Once again, they're on quite a streak for offering it every year. It used to be just once in great while, now they're doing it every year. And that's good. What it is, is it's fifty thousand dollars from the state. It's guaranteed money, but you have to kick in fifty thousand dollars. So your project has to be at the, at least a hundred thousand dollars to get there fifty thousand match. And so I talked to Doug Giles and I also talked to the Matt Longenekker from Graham and Hyde, the architect. And we feel that the next best project to do that's around a hundred thousand dollars is to put a new roof on New Boston. You know, that, the portion of the building that's still in existence was built in two thousand. And so that means that shingle roof is, as long as shingle roof is twenty-five years old, which that's probably the max for its lifespan. Now, it isn't leaking that we know of, but.
That shingles are from, from, it's about twelve years instead of twenty-five.
Oh, really? Yeah.
It is leaking. There are leaks.
There are leaks?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so then.
Sounds like it's a good project.
Yeah, but then it'll be this summer is when the work would be done. And I, I just, I've already got the safe word filled out for the state online. I just need what, did the board vote to approve, you know, and then if we can show that, and I actually have to upload the minutes. And then that'll be approved and then we can get the architect to do this architect thing and.
So you need a straw poll or assistance?
No, or it's just an action item.
Yeah, just approve that.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the school maintenance grant for the Apollo, or the New Boston Elementary Room.
I move yes.
Prove that. Second.
Yates, motions, Ballmer, second. Roll call, please.
Smack.
Yes.
Prick.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Ballmer.
Yes.
And Nelson.
Yes.
Motion carries, five oh. Eight point two, title, title nine?
Title four.
Title four.
Oh, yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Roman numerals there. Okay, so title four, we get title one, title two, title four. Next year at the, with the designation, we're going to get title one A money. And so right now, you can take your title four money and throw it into title one. You can take your title two money and throw it into title one. You can't go the other direction. And so right now, we use our title four money to pay for the advanced placement tests. Students who want to take very rigorous courses that are at a college level at the end of the year can take a test. Everybody in America takes it the same day. And so you get a score of one, two, three, four, or five. And colleges will accept it as college, you know, as a college course if you get a three, four, or five. The high-end colleges like the Ivy League, they'll demand a four or five on that. So it's a, it's a very good thing for our high-achieving students. The test costs seventy-five dollars. We've always picked up the tab on that. And, and then also dual credit, that's a, a different kind of college class. That's where you actually get college credit, whereas the AP just excuses you from that class when you go to college. Dual credit, you actually get college credit. And so we have been supplementing that, that dual credit over years. And the reason we did that was because it was a new concept fifteen, twenty years ago. Not many people knew what dual credit was. All these years later, everybody knows what dual credit is now. And so there's no need to try to create an incentive for kids to take the class because they all know, wow, if I'm going to go off to college and I can get some of my courses, coursework done here, that's great. Just a little story, my son Jake took welding here with Aaron Hart. And he got six college credits and when he was registering for senior classes in college, they said, "Oh, you need six credits of electives." And, or you can't graduate. And so he said, "Well, I took welding in high school." I said, "Good enough." And so he was able to use those, even though he's in a business degree, his welding classes counted. And, and so, but, but I think that the time to, to give incentives for them to take it are gone. They don't need them anymore because they just hopefully understand it. And so if we did that, we'd save twenty-six thousand dollars and we'd be able to put that title four money into title one because our expenses far exceed, you know, the money that we get for title one. So that would help buffer that a little bit. And that would be really one of the first things to do, you know, budget-wise this year, to try to improve things. Oh, and I, I talked to the counselors at the high school about it and they're on board.
I just want to point out one thing we did talk about with finance committee is that still if there's a student, the, that there are avenues to go, but they're not going to go without.
Yes, yes. If there's a student that just makes so much sense that this kid needs to have help with this, we will find a way.
So then the motion is to, what was the motion? Type, let's just list the type.
Yeah, motion to.
To redirect.
Yeah, to redirect title four, yeah, and to end the.
Paying for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Credit courses.
Right.
The son's a court smith over there.
Did you get all that?
I think so.
All right.
You can use ish.
I would entertain a motion to redirect title four funding to title one and no longer pay for the AP test or dual credit courses for students.
So what?
Yates makes the motion. Second?
Second.
Ballmer? Roll call, please.
Yates.
Yes.
Ballmer. Nelson.
Yes.
Smack.
Yes.
Prick.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item nine, administrative reports. So we'll start with New Boston Elementary. Do you have anything to add or?
Uh, yeah, we had our dancing fundraiser fundraiser on Saturday. Our guest judge was okay. We raised eleven thousand three hundred dollars, a little bit more than that. We still got about a hundred grand to go, so don't stop here. We have shoes. I guess keep them fresh because we're going to need quite a bit more to go to get to the preschool playground finished and all the turf places.
Oh, looks good.
All right, thank you. Junior high?
Um, I just wanted to highlight, thank Mrs. Boswell, working with the high school. The high school counselor brought in Illinois State Attorney General Specialist for Internet Safety. We had hers come in as a guest speaker, about four, six, seven, eight, three. Very quick to give kids grown books and phones where they can use those devices. But she was able to give information, some of the things that the kids can be watching for, access to a lot of those devices. So shout out to those people for helping bring her in for that person. That was a very good, very good presentation.
Thank you. We've got the high school next.
Couple of things. The discipline summary on there, I just wanted to note, like, we are trying to keep those kids in school, which is why those in-school numbers are a little higher. But that is a growing concern with our lack of actual dedicated space for ISS. The fact of the auditorium is not ideal. But moving rooms isn't ideal either throughout the day. And banning choir rooms aren't ideal either. So it's like the lesser of the two evils. And I also, I know we are in money crunches, but we'd love a para or a dedicated person for that. We do a great job of getting subs to cover it, but having a rotating person in a situation like that, I need someone that I can train to run a program to make it more beneficial than, you know what I mean? I wanted to note real quick that we had eighteen kids who have art in the QC Arts Festival of Trees currently. And two of them, Melon Miller and Holly Brown, just, we just found out this week, won awards. One got first place in 2D design and one got an honorable mention in the drawing category, so that was pretty cool. We also have that same internet provider, our presentation, which does check off one of our state requirements. And she does do a fabulous job. Our counselors helped us set that up. We also are in the midst of having the crisis center come in and do our Aaron Law presentations. They like to do them by classes, so we have one, four different ones. One for freshmen, one for, you know, all sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So I think we have juniors and seniors left. And those have been, one this week and one, I think, the following. So we're almost done with those. Again, that way they can better tailor them for each of the classes. There are some different videos and things like that for the different levels, which helps us a little bit with their attention and getting the points across. With regards to AP tests, those were just ordered. So we will, in the beginning, in the first couple of weeks, and they have twenty-nine students taking thirty-eight AP tests, which is pretty awesome. They've been working hard with students on getting stuff set up for Black Hawk classes, meeting with their Black Hawk person. Oh, and the other awesome news we just got recently was we had nine students selected to our Illinois State Scholars. So we're pretty stoked about that as well.
Thank you very much. And thoroughly like Senator.
Yeah, something I wanted to highlight is we hosted our first book fair and we did a Read to Succeed Night. Our amazing parent educator organized that and we were able to purchase a hundred dollars worth of books for our classrooms. And then we also had some generous, like, family donors, too. And then if they came to the Read to Succeed Night, we were able to give each preschooler that attended twenty dollars to purchase that night at the book fair. So that was a good way to give kids a chance that maybe usually can't attend a book fair and purchase books. So it turned out really good. I think we had fifteen preschoolers and about fifty in attendance. And Hope Neil from the ROE gave a presentation on the importance of reading as a family, so.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I'll start our parent-teacher conferences. We had those in October, end of October. We had three hundred and sixty-five out of three hundred and seventy-five show up, so that's ninety-seven percent of our, our parents showed up, so that was amazing. Right now, we have a food drive going on. So far, our families and students have donated one thousand one hundred and sixty-two items. That goes till next week. And that stays local to the Alito food pantries, so that's good. Friday, we have our donuts with grownups that our PTO is putting on at seven fifteen in the morning. Where a kid needs to come in with a grownup to have donuts. Give the kids juice, not coffee. The adults can have coffee. So that's all, that was, we did that for the first time last year and it was a huge success, so I imagine it will be on Friday as well. And then our winter music concerts, you're invited to those. December tenth is our K through two concerts. December twelfth, our third through fifth, and we'll thank the high school because they let us invade their auditorium for that. We fill it up, so.
And going forward, and we have the kids from New Boston come, so principals, I might reach out to you. I've got a couple of ideas for the next two months, but I may reach out to you to see if there's an organization or group within your buildings that might want to come to the board meeting to tell us what they're doing. I, I, Devin reached out to me to do, and it was like perfect timing and I, I like it. So it gives us, gets us to actually see what the kids are doing, their excitement for things, so. The other thing, the school report card, when you touched on the graduation rate of eighty-eight percent. When you look at our, I mean, most of our classes are less than a hundred kids. So if you have one kid not graduate, it really affects that that percent. It's not as, it's not as, I guess, bad. Eighty-eight percent seems bad, but if you figure that that's maybe what the student order.
Well, and also, when you have a kid who moves away in their sophomore year and they, we don't ever get the records of where they went, you have to count that against your graduation rate, even though they might have graduated auditorium someplace else. But if they didn't tell us and we got no information, it goes against that.
I was going to say, Andrea had been working on some of that because she felt that some of that was skewed and not correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of things like that, like two went to the personal sometimes.
Especially like leaves the state probably or.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if that new school isn't interested in getting the old records, the kids not.
And then like, we also have things to, like homeschooling and things like that where the records wouldn't, like there aren't. So.
Yeah, that's another good point.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for the administrative reports. So that moves us to item ten, closed session. So I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Go into closed session.
Yates, second. Nelson. Roll call, please.
Ballmer.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smack.
Yes.
Prick.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes. All right. Uh, we'll reconvene at seven thirty in closed session.